I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, April 10th. If everyone would stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let the record show we have all members present except for Jeff Hires. And we need an adoption of the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the additional supplemental.
Motion by Tracy and a second by Tammy, all in favor? Six zero. And approval of bills. Brian, did you have a chance to look those over?
Everything was good, so I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Okay. Second? Right, we have a motion by Brian and a second by Barbara, all in favor? Six zero. Okay, we have, first off, I wanted to say hello to my friends from Ross. Hi guys, glad you came. And we have, before we get started, I want to tell Carlos happy birthday. He's gonna talk here in a minute, but today's his birthday, so happy birthday. And we have first up, the STUCO report for the high school from Maribel. There she is. You're kind of blending in.
So we decided that May 3rd, it's a Wednesday, will be our senior movie night. This year, we're gonna do a new way to choose the movie and we're gonna put a Twitter poll out there for the seniors to pick. So we decided that it's between Poltergeist, Mulanah, Shrek, SpongeBob the Movie, or Mulan. So it's gonna be neat to see which one wins. Early in May also, we're planning to visit with both middle schools and Sacred Heart to talk about student council, kind of recruit new members, and also just to clarify some things about high school and to answer some questions that middle schoolers may have. We're contacting sponsors for our back-to-school water park event. We're trying to contact Cargill to see if they can sponsor our little event, like get back together for next August. And then, this is a bittersweet feeling, but I'm gonna introduce to you the 2017-2018 president of student council, Leah Stein.
Welcome Leah.
Hi, so yeah, as Maribel said, I'll be the STUCO president for next year. As she said, we already have some great things planned, so I look forward to keeping you all informed and up to date. It'll be hard to fill Maribel's shoes, but I'm sure we'll have a great year.
Thanks Leah.
So some of the rest of the officers include Vanessa Turan as our vice president, secretary is Alex Rangel, treasurer is Josh Snaywise, and public relations is Catherine Greenleaf. So, like I said, it's bittersweet, but I'm glad that some of our most wonderful people are gonna step up and take some action. Thank you.
Now, Maribel, will you be back in May, or this is your last one?
I will be back in May. It's just that we just elected them this last week.
Okay.
I will be back.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and for Dodge City Middle School, Alondra, is that correct? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Alondra Vaya from DCMS Student Council. First of all, the robotics class with Mr. Stive built Lego robots. They are competing on April 28th in Fort Hayes. The robots were built to do the following activities: follow the line, sumo, shalom, and clear the field. Next, we have student council. We're hosting our final dance of the school year on April 21st. The theme we chose is spring fling. Also, STUCO is having a beautification day on April 28th. During this activity, the members will clean the school grounds, tend to the trees, plant flowers. On the 21st, the students will also be voting to elect their new STUCO officers for the 2017-2018 school year. National Junior Honor Society is also getting ready to induct their new members on May 16th. They delivered 18 roses this past week, one rose to each potential new member. Academic awards were given out at the, at March, at the end of March for the third quarter academics. We're proud of the 124 students that earned this award for academic excellence. The IT Club is creating a study skills game in Minecraft play. Students have to answer questions for math, ELA, science, or social studies. If they answer correctly, they progress through the maze to finish. Finally, on April 25th, DCMS is having an art show combined with our Title One night. The theme for parent night is literacy and the arts, which will begin with a dinner. After the dinner, parents will go to the auditorium for student recognition and presentation on how to check out digital books over the summer. After the assembly, parents will be invited to join us in the arts festival to include auditorium performances and student art exhibits. We will be showcasing student and staff talents, including drama, photography, drawing, painting, and so much more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos from Comanche Middle School.
Before I begin, I just wanted to say our STUCO did not have many meetings since the last board meeting because of scheduling and everything that's been going on. Tomorrow evening from 7 to 8, students artwork will be displayed throughout the school. Students wrote poetry and skits. Staff will also have their artwork displayed in the show. We recently had our STEAM night last Tuesday. There were over 180 people in attendance and it was great. Students went from station to station, learning from science to math, and I heard that it was pretty great and that they liked the pizza.
Of course.
We will be having a career fair held on May 17th from 9 to 11. Every room at CMS will be full of career options and college representatives. There will be 12 colleges and 30 careers represented. Sixth and seventh graders will explore career options and eighth graders will visit the colleges. We will be having STUCO elections for the 2017-2018 school year, the first week of May. And the Junior Honor Society will have their inductions on May 1st for next year's members. And we will be having Comanche Chavaganza, formerly known as Comanche Idol. It will be from 1 to 3 on May 24th in our auditorium, the last day of school. And we will also be having fifth grade visitation on May 15th and 16th. They will visit during the day and have an overview of middle school and see how the changes coming from elementary school and having a locker. That was very hard for me when I got in. There will also be a meeting for the parents of the fifth graders on May 16th at 6:00 PM.
All right. Thanks Carlos.
Thank you.
And happy birthday.
Thank you.
And we also have a bonus this time. We have Anisa from Ross Student Council that's gonna give a report.
Good evening, Madam President and other board members. The student council voted to pick the cover of the Ross Elementary Yearbook. That's one of the events that we have done. We've also chosen the T-shirt designs of our school shirts. And our current project right now is the Penny Challenge, which is a fundraiser for the, those affected by the fire in Ashland. And our goal is $1,200. If that grade, say fifth grade, won that, then they would get, their prize would be a movie and popcorn party. And that's all I have, and thank you for your time. Is there any questions?
No. You did a great job.
Thank you.
When I went and visited the Ross Student Council a few weeks ago and told them how scary it was the first time to get up and talk in front, so she kind of showed me up. She didn't look like she was nervous at all. Okay, recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The president shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. If you'd like to address the board, please approach the podium. Don't see anybody jumping up, so we'll move right ahead. What? Oh, okay. I thought maybe you wanted to talk. Okay, consent agenda. We have the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, approval of minutes from the March 27th board meeting, approval of the renewal of the Coca-Cola and variety vending contract, approval of donation from Sewell PTO for adjustable basketball goals, approval of donation from Dodge City Middle School Booster Club for additional track uniforms, approval of the 2017-2018 district meal prices, approval of contract with United Wireless Arena for 2017 Dodge City High School commencement. I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Real quick, I just have a question on the district meal prices. Are those gonna go up every year? They are.
Go ahead and sit down there Kathy. I'll give an answer, tell me if I'm right or wrong. It's my understanding, and Kathy, you correct me if we're wrong, basically, we get about $3 million a year from Department of Agriculture through the State Department to help with our free lunch program. And they now have rules and regulations that outline really basically what we're gonna charge. So depending where you start, probably they're gonna go up every year, and they've kind of almost set the amount. Did I say that right?
That is correct. Until we get, our full pay students get to the reimbursement rate, which every year goes up, the reimbursement rate right now is $3.49. And until what the full price parents or even the, yeah, full price, what they give us and what the feds give us, if that reaches the reimbursement rate, then your price will not go up. But until then, with that PLE tool that I submitted, they give us that, which is a very nice thing to have. Because basically, last year, we were supposed to be, on an average, at $2.50. When I put in all my numbers from October sales, we were at $2.46. So technically, I was supposed to go up to $2.66, but they will do a 10-cent cap. So that's why they put it at $2.56.
Okay.
So yes, the price will go up until we get to the reimbursement rate.
Now, if the board wanted to turn down the money from Department of, we could do that. I don't think I'd recommend that at all, so.
We cannot, I mean, we can choose not to increase the price if we would have somebody that would generously donate a lot of money to, because we can't use, we have to adjust that price, compensate the difference with non-federal funds.
Right.
So really, kind of, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for explaining that. And I'm sorry, I forgot who made the motion. Was that?
I made the motion.
Tammy and Brian seconded. All in favor? Six zero. Okay, new business curriculum and instruction, the physical education, health, activity, recess.
Hello, thank you so much for giving me a little bit of time tonight. They tell me I only have five minutes, so I'm gonna talk really fast and cram a bunch of information. But I'm also gonna get you up out of your seats too, so prepare for that. Okay? Yeah. Oh, did I? Oh, there you go. Okay, so, as we all know, we, times have changed in education. Everybody's aware of that. Oh, first, I'm April Laugh. I teach PE at Lynn. I'm also serving on the K-Ford Executive Council this year. That's the Kansas Association for Health, Recreation, PE, and Dance. We have a lot of things that we've been working really hard on in bringing PE and the importance of PE in health. You'll hear me refer to PE, and when I say that, I mean PE and health together. PA stands for physical activity, and then of course recess. We, of course, were very excited when we found out that we did make the ESSA cut, but we also do understand that there's probably not going to be a lot of funds for us. And we do understand that. But we want you and we want the world to understand the importance of what we do. So I wanna talk to you first, just a little bit about what quality physical education is. That's actually a term that's pretty hot right now in the PE world. So Shape America is who guides all PE teachers across America. I just returned from Boston over spring break. I spent my week in Boston, it was amazing. At our national convention, as part of my duties on our K-Ford Council, I was able to go. And so, just really quickly, I wanna run through the Shape America, and this is a website everybody can get to. This lists our national PE standards. Kansas is currently, our standards have not been rewritten since 2006, but we, and when I say we, I'm part of that, are actively working to get that changed very, very soon. So we basically follow the national PE standards, and you'll see a word in there a lot, physical, physically literate. So although we normally look at literacy as reading, which is important, for the PE world, it's actually something a little different. So quality physical education goes hand-in-hand with physical literacy. And I have the definition out there, I'm not gonna read it for you, 'cause I want to use all my time. But physical literacy is really important. One of the best ways that I first learned what physical literacy, is someone told me that if an elderly woman starts to slide on an icy sidewalk, does she know physically how to prevent herself from falling? That's physical literacy in its, in a simple form. Really quickly, shape also includes what quality physical education is not. We have appropriate and inappropriate practices related to fitness tests. Fitness test is kind of a big item in the PE world right now. A lot of people are being pulled a lot of different directions in the fitness testing. A lot of PE teachers feel like, maybe we're not giving quality physical education when we are doing our fitness testing in the very basic form. There's a lot of movement towards heart rate monitors and measuring social emotional standards and how children are feeling when they're doing physical education. So that's something we're also working on. You'll see a hot topic number two, dodgeball is not an appropriate physical education activity. It is appropriate as an activity, as a physical activity outside of school, but it's not an appropriate thing to be in a school gym where students are supposed to be learning. The basic problem with it is that it is a human target. That's, we have a million different ways we can teach children how to throw that include not throwing at a person. So, here is a picture, this just kind of gives you an idea. These are some kiddos from Lynn Elementary. These are kindergarten students at the beginning of the year. This is some physical literacy. You'll see they're balancing, they're learning the little colorful steps. So imagine you're on a walk with your family by a river and you're trying to walk on rocks. It's kind of the same idea. We always know we're gonna have to jump and leap and hop over things. And then of course balancing, and then the hula hoops you can see. So in physical literacy, from that perspective, that would be that they're trying to duck and make their way through something, which we've all been there and done that. So that's just a few pictures of some quality, examples of quality PE with physical literacy. I put a few more pictures up here that I'll run through really quick. This is a kind of a fun game that's called table ball. We work really hard in PE to expose the children to things that they could go home and do as physical activity. This is an example. There's a couple other pictures there, a health, MyPlate Nutrition lesson, and using our technology that we have so available here in our district. And then there's some kids work up there on, they had to choose a word for the semester. And so there's actually four examples in that. I just made into one picture, but I love the drawing, by the way, of the flexibility. That was, I thought that was pretty amazing. So that's some examples of some quality PE with physical literacy worked into it. This first became aware to us that not a lot of people understand the difference between PE and physical activity. I was recently in a meeting with Dr. Watson, and at the end of our 30 minutes with him, I had to convince him that there was actually a difference. He was very respectful about it, and I was too. But we did, by the end of meeting, know that there was a difference. The easiest way I can explain is PE, we teach the kids how to be physically active, so that not only in PE are they being active, but when they leave PE, they're still active. Okay, everybody stand up. I've talked a lot. For this one, you can stay right where you're at. Just stand up. Okay, so the first thing I want you to do is I want you to take your right hand and I want you to just wave up and down, kind of like you're a robot. Okay? Okay, so put your hand down. Now I want you to take your left hand and wave like this. Okay, so now try both. A little awkward, right? Okay, you can go ahead and sit down. So that's an example of a physical activity that a teacher could use in a traditional classroom setting, outside of PE. That's a quick little brain boost, and I'm gonna draw some attention to that word. We call them brain breaks, because we've known that forever as what they're supposed to be. We're really, I'm really working hard at getting people to say a brain boost, because if you're saying a brain break, then you're saying the brain's taking a break. And we all know our brain is working in overdrive when we're active. So, brain boost. I included the Kansas Toolkit from Shape America. So on their website, I won't talk much about this, because I know my time's ticking away, but on their website, we can actually go and look at where we stand in the world of physical education and recess and PE, this is all included, or and physical activity. So that's just something I wanted you guys to be aware of, that you can look up the state profile on the website. So I kind of talked a little bit about how physical activity was different. I brought some pictures, 'cause I'm a visual person, and so I think everybody else should be too. So something, physical activity directly in my school, this is a morning before school fitness club, we do twice a week, and it's open to second through fifth graders. They don't have to sign up, they just have to be at school, meet me at my office at 7:25. From 7:25 to 7:45, we do our thing. We might just walk the halls if it's cold. We recently used grant money to buy some equipment where we can do some indoor exercise too. But that's an example of physical activity. So they learn those skills in PE and then they're able to use them. Here's an example of an open gym night. I do those once a month, I have for a few years, but this is an example of kids using their PE and their knowledge from PE with their families after school hours to promote being healthy. And then, of course, everybody has end-of-the-year filled days. Those are all coming up for PE teachers, so we're all in overdrive with that right now. But that's an example of some physical activity as well. Little bit about recess, that's kind of a hot topic. This is a really good article, I know I don't have time to read it, nor do you at this moment, but I invite you to look it up. It's a pretty good, it floated around Facebook, social media. But it talks about recess not being something that can be taken away for behavior issues. It talks about allowing our kids to have recess. We all dream of there being more recess for our kids. Nobody's in denial that it doesn't need to happen, it's just all about the minutes. Mr. Fortmeyer and I visited just a little bit the other day about this. K-Ford is working really hard to get the academic language changed with our state school board. We want them to understand that recess is learning time. It may be one of the best learning times of the day. They're learning soft skills that they may not get in any part of their day, other part of their day. So we, we're working hard on the recess. We recently, when I say we, I'm talking about K-Ford, we recently were able to have a meeting with a lady named Deb Bray from Texas Christian University. She has a program called the LINX Program, two I's, and it's huge right now in Texas, Oklahoma, California. They, her program includes 45 minutes of recess a day with no less than three recesses. You can divide it, some of the schools divide it into four, 15 minutes. She's real strict, she has a character education thing built within it as well, but she makes, if you're part of the program, the teachers go with the kids, because she's a strong believer that the teachers need the recess time too. It's a really cool program. We introduced it to the Innovative School Districts, I think that's the right terminology, for Kansas, oh, a few months ago, but it's just, it's a really costly program. She does charge a really hefty fee. But she is also so passionate about it that we have been able to get her to come in and speak to our state school board. So she does have some really good data and proof and research of what recess can do for kids. Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. I'm gonna show you this video. I would love for you to watch this video. This is Blaine Coffey. I have, oh, kind of made me tear up. He's just such an awesome kid, and he's one of my students that I'm just thrilled that I get to teach this kid. But I texted his mom a couple nights ago and said, hey, I want you to ask Blaine some questions, and I don't want you to prep him. I want you to ask and I want you to send me exactly what he says. And she was like, are you sure? Yes, I'm sure. Please do. So Blaine, this is just a couple minutes long. While you're watching this movie, don't watch me, 'cause I'm gonna put some equipment out that we're gonna end with, and then I'll be done. And I know I'm probably past my five minutes, and I apologize. Oh, hold on, I think.
Okay, let's talk about...
Do you wanna go ahead and play it there? Sometimes it doesn't seem like air server.
Okay, let's talk about recess. Do you wish you had more recess?
Yes.
How do you feel when recess is over?
Sad.
Why?
Because you don't get any more time to play. Because you don't get any more time to play.
Okay. What do you like to do at recess?
Play with my friends.
What kinds of things do you play?
Tag.
You do a brain boost. How does it make you feel? Why?
Because you get to get up and stretch.
In PE, what do you learn about?
In PE, we learn about how to be strong and how to be healthy.
Okay. And how does that make you feel?
Happy.
Why?
Happy.
Why does it make you feel happy?
Because you're learning how to take care of yourself.
How do you think PE, brain boosts, and recess are all different?
Because in brain boosts, you like get up and like dance, and in PE, you like have stuff you're supposed to be doing, and in recess, you can just do whatever you want.
So that was Blaine. Blaine was very excited that he was gonna be on TV tonight. Okay, so I'm gonna end with this. I would love if anybody who wants, but I would really love if you guys would, would step out here and pick up a piece of equipment. A couple things really quick, so there's little pieces of pool noodles. If you hold it like this and flip it, it flies. Okay? So that's kind of fun. The red things are called spooners. It's a balance board, so be a little careful when you get on that. The cones are for flipping, like think water bottle flipping. I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory. So if you wanna come on down and find a piece of equipment, anybody's welcome. Yeah, the kids are like...
There's kiddos out there.
See how much the kids love that? See how much the kids love that?
There's no, no workers comp for the board now, so don't break anything.
Okay, so what's gonna happen is I'm gonna play some music, and while I'm playing the music, you're gonna play with the piece of equipment that you're at. When the music shuts off, everybody's gonna shift one place to the right, and then you're gonna play with the next piece of equipment. Okay?
See if you can flip it and get it to land on its bottom. Just, just flip it up there.
All right, the music's not real loud.
There's too much bounce, probably.
Okay, go ahead and rotate to your right. Go to the next piece of equipment. Okay, go ahead and rotate one more time. Although, we could do this all night, right?
Supposed to flip that and get it to land on its bottom.
So you flip the cone like a water bottle. Try to get it to land. All right, so now if you can do me a favor and just bring the equipment over here and we'll drop it in the bag. And I thank you guys so much for your time and participation.
Dehydrated.
Was that too much for you?
Too much. Anymore.
Okay, next up, we have this secondary student handbook. Mr. Fortmeyer, Dr. Fortmeyer?
Madam President, Board Member, Superintendent Cunningham, we have a pretty lengthy little group of policy changes for you, but I think Deb Longton has made it easier for you. She gave you an email in the Weekend Review that had the attachment and listed the different changes that are going to be discussed tonight. The first one, though, I want to make sure you have a handout, copy of an email, that was the high school attendance wording. This policy change, this procedural change is basically just to make sure that principals have verbiage in their handbook. It states that they will make the decision on whether it is a excused absence or not versus just a parent calling in and saying, yes, I'm aware that my kid was absent regardless of the reason. So that's why that's there, is just to make sure parents understand. It still needs to be a valid reason for the absence. The, or it can be marked unexcused. So that's the only change for the handbook for the high school. Any questions on high school? Okay, going to the middle school handbook. This is a common handbook between the two schools. Where there's differences, each school has an addendum that we will talk about shortly. The, you'll see that some of these are just policy updates that were required to be placed as the board approved some of the policies that have been recommended by the administration through the year. They have to go into the handbook for the following year. The first one is Board Policy JBE, which is truancy, and that's just going direct from the policy, putting it into the handbook so parents will be aware of the policy directly. That's on page five. On page six, there's a reporting of truancy and notification to the parents that both schools will be using, the 10-day letter is what we usually refer it to, and that's just making sure parents are aware of how we will contact them before we file truancy, to give them an opportunity one more time to intervene. On page six, we also have the leaving during the school day, the checkout procedures that will be followed, and the reasons that the, expect parents to be able to communicate with the school about if they're gonna check a student out. On page 14, it's a heading change for the policy dealing with gang activity. On page 16, it's the actual policy that was adopted by the board in reference to animals and plants in schools, and that would be principal decision discretion, and how they will be note, parents will be notified if there was an incident concerning an animal, like if a gerbil bit a kid or, you know, something like that. That's what we would, how we would contact parents. Page 16, also, the rule is that students will walk their bikes off campus instead of not riding through traffic areas of pedestrian traffic on the sidewalks, so it's safer. Page 17, we've made some additions for the electronic devices, and that is that there would be no lasers allowed. That's a, you know, we all know the danger involving direct contact with eyes that, from a laser, and that other devices can be on the students, but they cannot be disruptive. And they emphasizing to the parents that the school is not responsible for items that are brought on campus and they subsequently are stolen. The students that bring electronic items bring them so at their own risk. Page 17 is our Internet access letter that we've added to make sure they understand the proper Internet use policy set by the board, and there's a little agreement check marks there. Public displays of affection policy is included on page 18, that prohibiting the public displays of affection and keeping a proper decorum at the school for an educational environment. Explains the use of school security cameras and why they're used and where the purposes for protection of safety and the security of the campus. On 19, we have the lunch line, lunch area, the expectations, and that the addition there is that silverware is not to leave the cafeteria area. That's to help keep the inventory viable. On page 20, it's a heading change. That's all it is for that policy. On 21, it is the inclusion of the board new adopted weapons policy, which is in accordance with Kansas state law and federal law. On page 23, the medications update. That's again with board policy that was adopted. We're putting in to reflect the new changes in medication and students' procedures for how they would bring the allowable medications that they're allowed to carry at older ages. The update on telephones is staff permission. Basically, students can use phones at school with staff permission. 25, searches in students is directly putting in the policy adopted by the board, JCABB. That's to make sure parents are aware of that policy. And searches on property, again, policy JCAB. Those are both required by the state for us to put in for parent notification. Again, also continuing required updates, the suspension expulsion procedures, policy JDD, adopted by the board earlier this year, is put into the handbook as required. Page 29, the truancy section was moved to page five. And then the uniform policy, basically the word, the wording referred to respective addendum for the policy was added into the handbook on that part. Those are the changes for combined student, middle school student handbooks. Any questions on those?
Glenn, I, this isn't necessarily related to the policies, but as we were going through there, it struck a thought. I leaned over to Tracy, actually. So as it relates to gangs, would it be fair in saying that gang issues or activity is not as prominent as it once?
Absolutely. They're far, far reduced. We all know that you always have to be vigilant. Gang activity goes up and down, but right now, for the last several years, you know, I've only been here two years, but in my checking with administration, gang activity has been very, very low or nonexistent, and that's something we always have to be dutiful to watch for because it is always present in every community, no matter how small. It can be 400 student, I mean, a 400-person community, and there's still presence. There's still people who will follow it by social media, et cetera. But the schools are, the kids have just been outstanding. Administration watches very closely, and, you know, there's been some minor incidents, but it's, they do a good job of educating kids and getting them to make sure they make good decisions, and the kids have been responding very positively. Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, there are no revisions for the CMS handbook addendum. DCMS handbook addendum, you'll see that there's a heading change, and then the cellphone has some notes, and electronic devices also has some notes on it, on procedures, some of the discipline steps that are dealt with. So basically, no changes in procedures. It's just giving parents the opportunity to see and what the expectations are. In A6, on articles that are prohibited, there's a lot of items that were deleted from it, and then they clarified that glue is super glue. And on A6, protocols for student responsibilities, that's the iPads. It's just basically giving how to be safe with iPads, how to care for them, the investment the board has made in our students to be able to use iPads, how they take care of it properly. A7, the health and wellness policy. It cites the district website as a place to go and get that information in order to view it, the middle school's wellness policy. And that's the addendum. Any questions about the DCMS addendum? The alternative education, very easy amendments here. The, basically, they're dealing with phone numbers, titles, dates have been edited. They're updating the position, titles, and personnel, like assistant superintendent. The calendar will be then later put in. The tardy policy has been updated. That is the only real change that's showing if they come in after nine o'clock, that when they're absent, so when the tardy cutoff is for students attending there, and when are they considered to be a unexcused absence during the day. Of course, those students are very fluid. They do move, but they have expectations for certain coursework that they have to be in by certain times and exit out, and that's what those changes are. Meal prices will be, of course, you just approved those new prices. It will go into that section also. That's E-stride, an alternative high school. Any questions there? Okay, then the choice program, at the alternative program also, we have the update on the phone numbers, and then the change in the elementary assistant principal will be updated there. And then, and I suppose there's no questions there. I can make that assumption. Also, now the therapeutic education center and the Lariat School. Almost all the changes here are the updating of information as far as calendar dates, time, the organizational charts, those type of changes that are all procedural. The other parts that you're seeing are where they've combined, since it's gonna be a combined handbook, the wording of therapeutic education center now is being combined. You'll see a lot of words like our or the programs in plural because it's applying to the Lariat School as well as to the therapeutic education center. So instead of just TEC, the wording is now listing both, or it's referring, using a pronoun that will address both. And that's, you'll see a lot of these changes are referencing just that unifying vocabulary that they're using to unify the two schools' programs. The, I don't see anything on here that is gonna be specifically different. There's some committees. The only part you will see that's really kind of different is the admissions piece, and that is on page 13, and that's showing the Lariat Way admissions, because it is not a special education program. So there is some difference in how they admit those students into the Lariat Way program and the supporting interventions that the parent agrees to in order to participate in that program. Any questions about TEC, Lariat Way? That's all of the secondary school changes that are being recommended, and we'd ask that you adopt those, approve those changes so that we can move to publication once we get the final dates on prices and that kind of thing.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Ryan and a second by Tracy. All in favor? Six, zero. Thanks, Glenn.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent, this evening I come with change orders for Dodge City High School, Miller Elementary, and Sunnyside Elementary. There's really two things that happened in this project at this point. Some of these are what we're calling, there's items that we refer to as owner's reserve. When you do a project, you have a contingency that is an owner's reserve in the design process and the early building process, and we kind of have had a money, so there will be some dollars going out of that and back into it. At this point, we're still positive, still on budget, nothing to worry about. But there's also then that we've talked about before, there are certain things that are being transferred, and the transfer is that it came out in the original budget, in the architect's budget, under the FFNE area, and now it's being transferred to the contractor because these are things that will be under his contract to install and make as part of the overall building project. So that's the purpose of these today. I think you've had the information. If you have any questions on any of these, I'll be happy to try to answer those. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but it's really just getting any buildings equipped as we're moving forward. Any questions? If they're not, then we would, and this is kind of a long thing on this. Do you want me to read it all, or do you just want me to say what's in the book, or how do you want me to handle it?
I just moved. It's okay, Bill.
Okay.
We have it. It's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
My second.
Well, I think it's good. We'll see what the rest say.
We have a motion by Ryan and a second by Barbara. All in favor?
Thank you so much for taking care of this evening. Second item is that last year, there was some furniture that, and Jack, if I get you this wrong, you can come up and correct me. There was some furniture you all kind of wanted to try out for some of the new learning experiences in the high school, and we did go out for bids on that particular business furniture. They, high school kind of left us some money at the end of the year to pay for those items, which we're grateful for. And basically, we had bids. There is a little situation, and we're gonna kind of call this, and I did check with our attorney to make sure this was okay. As we got bids, we had bids for new amounts, but we also had a bid for the existing demo furniture that was less. And speaking with Ms. Feist at the high school, the determination was, they're happy with it. It's less money. It saved the board money. So in our opinion, that is the recommendation this evening that you would accept, the alternate bid, existing demo furniture, to be paid from the capital outlay fund. That's where we put the money that was left over from the high school last year. And so the board has further requested to authorize the board clerk to issue a purchase order, sign a contract, subject to review by board council.
Okay.
Motion.
All right.
My second.
I have a motion by Brian and a second by Tammy. All in favor? Six, zero.
Okay. Let's see. I think I've got one more here. As you remember, the board purchased the building for, to move the Nutrition Central Storage Facility to the former Cox Warehouse Building at 2313 West Wyatt Earp. As part of that process, we were aware that we would have to basically remove some asbestos, and we were also aware that there was one room that they had, the effects of pigeons were quite evident. And so basically, this is a contract to take care of those two issues in that building, so we can proceed and move forward and get that up and coming. So the Board of Education has respectfully requested to approve the bid from BNR, installation amount of $27,377, to be paid from the capital outlay fund for remediation, interior demolition at the Nutrition Central Storage. Board further authorizes the Executive Director of Business Operation to issue a purchase order, sign a contract, subject to review by board council.
So, Bill, the interior demolition is just for the asbestos, or?
This will be, yes, this will be aimed at asbestos. A lot of the other work, our own people are gonna be taking care of. And by the way, if you drive by the back of the building, it's really been cleaned up because our people were down there tearing out a lot of brush and stuff around the building. So hopefully, before too long, it'll start looking a lot better, so.
And when do you anticipate that food services will be in there?
We're hoping this summer soon, but it's, there's a lot of things that have to be done. We're coordinating with electrical engineers, mechanical engineers, the architect. We're basically planning to use some rooftop units that were relatively new, that we replaced when we did Lynn and Beeson. Because of their location, we didn't want to leave them there and have to have a crane come back later on, so we replaced those when we did those, but we maintained them. So we're gonna put a couple of those on this particular unit. We're having, we're having Tom put together a contract for the, I will use the word tuck pointing, they have a better word for it in the construction industry than tuck pointing, but there is some tuck pointing that needs to be done on the exterior of the building. We'll get that done, and then we're going to do a coating on the exterior. We're gonna get some new freezers put in. It's gonna be an interesting process, but it is moving forward. We're hoping to have it done. I'm hoping that Kathy this fall is gonna have a whole new building to work out of. That's, that's our intention at least, so we're trying.
Okay. Okay, I make a motion for approval. Motion by Tammy and a second by Brian. All in favor? Six, zero.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's everything I need to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Board of Education, member district responsibilities. Barbara Park and Rec, did you have a meeting?
No, we didn't. It was canceled for last month.
Okay. Bright beginnings, head start, Tracy?
We discussed our last meeting, because we had the late March meeting, so I haven't had anything since then.
Okay. Special education, do we...
We had a meeting, they did, actually, they had a quorum without us, and just usual and customary business.
Okay.
Renewed administrative contracts, and I think that's really about it.
Okay. Legislative, Ryan?
Yeah, I don't know. Alan, you got anything to add to my report?
While we had, while we had your report last week.
Yeah.
No news, they're all on legislative break until May 1st.
Yeah. And we don't have anything new on capital outlay calendar committee. Tracy, you're scheduled to review the bills before May's meeting. We have announcements, Monday, April 24th, Board of Education luncheon meeting at Sewell at noon. Monday, May 8th, Board of Education meeting here in the Austin Boardroom at 6:00. Friday, May 19th, USD 443 Retirement Banquet at Dodge City High School at 6:00. Saturday, May 20th, Dodge City High School commencement at United Wireless Arena, 10:00 a.m. Sunday, May 21st, Dodge City Education Center Adult Diploma Program, graduation ceremony at Dodge City High School at 2:00. Monday, May 22nd, Board of Education luncheon meeting at Dodge City High School at noon. Wednesday, May 24th, last day of pre-K to 11 classes. Thursday, May 25th, Teacher Work Day, last day of 2016-2017 teacher contract. Do we have any items for future board meetings or additional information?
If we could revisit the ROTC discussion at the high school and where that's at, and the available space, and the new addition of Athletic End.
Okay. And are we, do we have more information on where we're gonna house therapeutic education, or are we working?
We're coming up with two to three options.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll get them to you at the next meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
We really wanna see what happens with the auction of the facilities out of you later this month.
Gotcha. Right, okay. All right, we are needing an executive session to discuss negotiations and preliminary discussions about the acquisition of real property. How long?
We're gonna need 30 minutes.
30 minutes, and we've got you and Bill.
Bill Hammond and Brian Delzite.
Okay.
I make a motion for 30 minutes for executive session.
Thank you. My second. I have a motion by Tammy and a second by Tracy. All in favor? Six, zero. Thank you, everyone.